Good evening, I call to order this meeting of the Pinellas County School Board on Tuesday, April 8th, 2025. Please note that Mrs. Hind is unable to attend the meeting this evening, so all votes will reflect six board members in attendance. We will begin with an invocation by Chaplain Milton Smith of All First Responders Matter, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by School Board Member Blacksburg, and the National Anthem performed by Countryside Chamber Choir under the direction of Kristy Jackson. Please stand and remain standing until completion of the National Anthem. Good evening, Chaplain Smith.
Good evening, thank you. Let us pray. Lord, we come thanking you for another glorious day. We are grateful for this of Pinellas County Schools. We offer prayer for the teachers and support staff, for the bus drivers and all those who work hard each day to make this school district awesome. We pray for this superintendent and the school board. Bless each and every decision that they make. Guide them with wisdom and knowledge. And ask all of these blessings in your most holy and glorious name. Amen.
Good evening, I'm Kristy Jackson, thank you so much for our invitation tonight. Our next song is "Sign No More," please enjoy.
Sign no more ladies, sign no more. Sign no more ladies, sign no more. Men were deceivers ever, what would it see and one on shore? What would they consider never, 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 never? Sign no more ladies, sign no more. Then sign us over, let them go and be you life and body, converting all your songs of hope into hey noni, noni. Hey noni, 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 noni no. Hey noni, 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 no. Hey noni, noni, no.
Thank you, Mrs. Jackson and the Countryside Chamber Choir. We will now share a video of student volunteers from Seminole High School.
For the first time in Enterprise Village history, we have the Center for Education and Leadership students from Seminole High School coming out to help us volunteer, kind of establish this relationship between the school and their program, and Enterprise Village being able to support schools throughout the year with some high-quality high school volunteers.
I think it's fun because I love working with kids because I teach dance classes at my dance studio, so I think I love like this age. So I love working with kids and I think it's fun to get to see them like, because I remember I really enjoyed Enterprise Village, so getting to see them enjoy it too.
Things are looking good.
Well, all the businesses here are like, it kind of shows an example of things that they could be doing in the real world, and it gives them a good example of what they would want to do in real life later when they're older.
Well, I know that I loved Enterprise Village and I really kind of just wanted to see it around for a second time and help the other kids have a great day.
I think this is great because I get to work hands-on with other kids and I can give them my advice from the past experiences that I've been through.
Having more volunteers here is always a helpful thing. The fifth graders do a great job when they come, but it's always nice to have extra helping hands guide them. And sometimes it's a little bit easier for them to seek out help or feel energetic about the help they're getting when it comes from a high school student.
It's fun because I'm thinking about going into the education field, so it's really interesting to get to work with the students and see kind of like how they react in this environment and just getting to help them.
Last time I was here, I had a really good time and I hope that they get the same experience that I did. They do learn obviously from this, but they have a lot of fun as well.
Thank you, Seminole High School students for volunteering at Enterprise Village. It's clear that this experience made an impact on the students that they were working with, as well as some of the students interested in becoming an educator or sharing their talents. Now, we will introduce our professional and community organization representatives by our Public Information Officer, Ms. Isabel Mascherinas.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Mr. Hendrick and Staff. It is my pleasure to introduce the following representatives of community and professional organizations. From the Pinellas Classroom Teachers Association, Lee Bryant, President. Representing the North Pinellas League of Women Voters, Nikki Amerantidis. From the Pinellas Arts for a Complete Education Coalition, Sue Castleman. Today, we have a presentation from the Student Rights and Responsibility Committee. Please welcome Addison Glover, Anne Perry, and Malana Brookins from Countryside High School and their Principal Taylor Henderson.
Greetings, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent Hendrick and Staff members. My name is Anne Perry, I'm a senior at Countryside High School and I am the senior class president. I'm attending Florida State University in the fall to major in athletic training on the pre-physicians assistant route. Throughout my time at Countryside, I have been involved in student government, cross-country, track, Spanish Honor Society, National Honor Society, and Safe Club. Now, I would like to invite my fellow Cougars to introduce themselves.
Hello, everyone, my name is Malana Brookins. I too am a senior at Countryside High School and I will be attending Harvard University next year to major in computer science. As a student at Countryside High School, I have been involved in a variety of leadership and service roles, including serving as President of Key Club, Future Business Leaders of America, and currently student government. Now, I would like to invite my fellow Cougar Addison to introduce herself.
Hi, my name is Addison Glover, I too am a senior at Countryside this year. I'm attending Christopher Newport University in Newport News, Virginia next year to double major in psychology and nursing. As a Cougar, I have been involved in soccer, track, cross-country, National Honor Society, and student government. We are proud to present all the great things that are happening at Countryside this evening. As we have much to be proud of in the forty-sixth year of our historic school. Countryside High School offers a robust academic and elective program for all of our Cougars. We offer over thirty rigorous academic classes through advanced placement, dual enrollment, and Cambridge ACE. Our students are supported by a caring staff that includes a full-time college and career center coordinator to help our students pursue their post-secondary endeavors. Exploring various careers and college opportunities is the flavor of our campus and can be seen in our large Avid program. The multiple industry certification opportunities at Countryside High School allow our students to pursue careers in high needs areas including digital design, agri-science, biotechnology, games and simulation programming, and construction technology, also computer science principles.
Our ISTEM Technology Program has been recognized by the Magnet School of America as a school of excellence. The ISTEM Program offers eight unique industry-leading strands of study and offers real-world application for all students to attain. This year, our ISTEM and Future Business Leaders students won the state championship during the FBLA State Competition for Network Design. This group of Cougars will be competing in the National Network Design Team Competition in Anaheim, California in June. Additionally, our ISTEM Cybersecurity Team has been ranked consistently in the top ten in the United States in the International Cyber Patriot Competition. Many of our ISTEM Biotechnology students participated in the state science fair that was held at Countryside High School in February. And Senior Madeline Lyle Dofino won the competition and will be participating in the International Science Fair in Columbus, Ohio this summer. Technology is king at CHS. Our ISTEM Program is happy to support students who serve as Dell technicians in rebuilding, preparing, and maintaining student and faculty laptops and devices throughout the year.
Performing and visual arts are a hit at Countryside as we have had numerous student artworks displayed throughout Pinellas County in our greater school community. Junior Annie Linker is a Schoolastic National Silver Medal winner this year and her work from intro to the bridge has been displayed throughout local art shows. Our famed Drama Troop 900 held a fun and inviting musical version of The Addams Family for their spring production. We had a record number of acts that were recognized for state competition to the fall. The CHS Choral Program has been on key all year and has earned straight superiors for Chamber Choir. The choir plans to perform at Carnegie Hall in New York City this June. The Countryside High School Golden Cougar Band of Pride is not left out in having a banner year as they earn superior ratings in their division at the Marching Performance Assessment in the fall. It is truly a great time for Cougar Arts and we are super proud of our musicians and artists on campus.
Cougar Athletics has also been on the prowl all year. Our boys' basketball team won their first district title in almost a decade, defeating Saint Petersburg to become the Class 5A District 10 Champions. The team finished in the top eight in Florida and on the brink of the Final Four, coming up just short in overtime to the Green Devils. The boys' team was highlighted by a group of seniors including 5A 10 Player of the Year, Corey Perlin, and Senior Carter Pagez. He finished his career with a hundred and seventy-eight three-point shots made. Our awesome coach, she was a Countryside alumni, Dion Patterson, was also named the 5A 10 Coach of the Year. The school's spirit and support for her team was tremendous this season, offering a great home court advantage. Our defending state champion and first girls' wrestling state champion, Serenity Whiting, finished state runner-up at the state wrestling championships, finishing the season with only one loss. Serenity challenged weight classes to compete at the weight she will carry during her college career. Senior swimmer Rex Bibble won the state championship in the 500 freestyle race in a thrilling come from beyond victory. Rex was district and conference champion in numerous events and will be swimming collegiately next year. This year was also a historic one for our softball program. As with your approval, CHS officially named our softball field after former legendary coach Kalen Bailey. It is truly a great time to be a Countryside Cougar and we are hopeful for having more accolades as the spring sports season closes out.
The student experience at Countryside is second to none. Our school is proud to offer over forty clubs for student interest. This year, we added a fishing club and will be adding a Science National Honor Society for next year. Student involvement in our organizations has been tremendous and our students are very active in our local community. Our students benefit from activities on campus throughout the year like our nineteen twenties-themed Great Gatsby prom at Ruth Eckert Hall this Friday. Academic success and school involvement have allowed our students to earn numerous scholarships. We had seven students earn the Clearwater Freed Scholarships of various award amounts and Alex Brucino was recognized as a National Merit Scholar this year. Thank you for allowing us the privilege of presenting our beloved CHS with you this evening and go Cougars!
Go Cougars! Thank you for being here and highlighting what makes Country High School great. And thank you, Principal Henderson. Now, we're moving on to Item Two, Amendments to the Agenda. Mr. Hendrick, are there any amendments to the agenda?
There are no amendments, Madam Chair, thank you.
Board members? May I have a motion to adopt the agenda? With a motion from Mrs. Long and a second from Mrs. Myers? Any opposed? All in favor? The motion passes with a vote of six, zero. We will now move on to Item Four, Special Order Agenda. First on our Special Order Agenda is Item 4.1, Presentation of the Proclamation Designating April 2025 as National School Library Month. May I have a motion to approve the proclamation? A motion from Mrs. Blacksburg and a second from Mrs. Peters, Mr. Hendrick?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'd like to call up Ronwyn Slack, our Program Coordinator for Library Media, to tell us more about this proclamation and the great work happening in our school libraries. Mrs. Slack?
Thank you, good evening, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Mr. Hendrick and the community. I'm here today to request your approval to recognize April as National School Library Month and celebrate the services that our library media programs and educators provide to our students in Pinellas County. Since our last proclamation, our district reading programs continue to grow and evolve. As a result of the success and excitement around our Boys Read Program and our Guys Read High School Program, we have expanded our district reading programs to now include Guys Read for middle school. This past January, we hosted our district competition for Boys and Guys Read. Our district winner for our Boys Read Program was Lake St. George Elementary. For our pilot program for the Guys Read Middle School level, Morgan Fitzgerald Middle School came in first place. And for our high school Guys Read Program, Eastlake High School prevailed and was the winner. I'm excited to share that we are almost finished curating the book lists for all Boys and Guys Read Programs for the 2025-2026 school year. I plan to announce those selections before the end of May. As an extension of our Boys Read Initiative, this July at Westgate Elementary School, we are hosting our first summer camp for boys in rising third through fifth grade. Camp Read Strong will include hands-on activities, competitive challenges, and fun theme-based quests, all while building reading skills. Students that have been accepted into the camp represent all corners of Pinellas County and the positive response we have received with this new camp offering shows how important literacy programs are for families across our school district. Finally, National School Library Month is a great time to highlight some of the successes and events related to our school library media programs. This school year, we had two schools that were recognized in November as Florida Power Library Schools. This initiative recognizes outstanding library media programs in the state of Florida. Florida Power Library Schools are recognized each year at the Annual Florida Association of Media and Education Conference. We also have special events going on in the district this spring. Our annual Battle of the Books District Competition will take place on April 30th. And we also have schools that are planning to host a school literacy fair and other literacy-related experiences during the month of April. In May, we will host our third annual Pinellas County Students Film Festival. Our theme this year is digital responsibility and it has been amazing to see how students have taken that theme in a creative direction. In closing, I want to say how thankful I am for our library media professionals for all they do every day. I feel honored and proud to support this group of educators. I hope you will join me in celebrating and recognizing them in honor of National School Library Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Slack. Mrs. Long, would you please read the proclamation?
School Library Month. Whereas school library programs promote and encourage a love of reading and are influential in preparing students for lifelong learning through the development of information, literacy skills. And whereas school library programs close achievement gaps for all learners by providing equitable access to the academic resources. And whereas, school librarians play a critical role in supporting the instructional technology that is necessary to maintain a rigorous learning environment in each school. And whereas, school librarians are instructional partners who directly support and enhance student achievement. Now, therefore, the School Board of Pinellas County does hereby recognize April as School Library Month. Sign this eighth day of April 2025.
I have a motion from Mrs. Blacksburg and a second from Mrs. Peters to approve the proclamation designating April 2025 as National School Library Month. All in favor? Any oppose? The motion passes, six, zero. Thank you. Item 4.2 is the Presentation of the Proclamation Recognizing April 2025 as National Volunteer Appreciation Month. May I have a motion to approve the proclamation? We have a motion from Mrs. Long and a second from Mrs. Kane, Mr. Hendrick?
Thank you, Madam Chair, we're excited to call up Dr. Jane Lucas, our Director of Strategic Partnerships, to highlight the work of our twenty-four thousand registered volunteers in our schools and the great work they do supporting our students and our teachers every day. Dr. Lucas?
Thank you, Mr. Hendrick. Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Hendrick and Staff, good evening. The Office of Strategic Partnerships is excited to bring you this proclamation for April 2025 as National Volunteer Appreciation Month. Volunteers play a vital role in the daily success of our schools and students. They support our teachers and students in a variety of ways, including mentoring and tutoring, chaperoning field trips, assisting in classrooms, front offices, and media centers. They act as special guest speakers and serve in leadership roles for PTSA, SAC, as well as in booster organizations. The district currently has, as Superintendent Hendrick said, over twenty-four thousand active volunteers who have donated over two-hundred thousand hours this school year alone. The dedication and generosity of our volunteers in supporting Pinellas County Schools with our mission of one-hundred percent student success solidifies their status as an invaluable resource to our schools and community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lucas. Mrs. Myers, will you please read the proclamation?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Proclamation Volunteer Appreciation Month. Whereas, the month of April has been designated nationally as Volunteer Appreciation Month to recognize the hard work, dedication, and passion of volunteers throughout our nation. And whereas, this year, more than twenty-four thousand volunteers in Pinellas County Schools have given over two-hundred thousand hours of their time along with their talent and resources to our schools, which is a testament to the commitment and generosity of our community. And whereas, the school district of Pinellas County commemorates Volunteer Appreciation Month by recognizing its valued volunteers through events and initiatives at the school, district, and state level. And whereas, Pinellas County Schools believes that the district alone cannot meet all of our schools and students' needs, so we partner with individuals, businesses, faith-based organizations, nonprofit organizations, and foundations in our community to make a difference. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Pinellas County and the Superintendent hereby proclaim the month of April as Volunteer Appreciation Month and urges all to observe this month by taking time to recognize and acknowledge the positive impact of volunteers in Pinellas County who give so unselfishly of their time and talent in our district. Signed this eighth day of April 2025.
Thank you. Board members, any comments?
We know the importance of volunteers and their impact is everlasting. If you are interested in volunteering, you can contact a local school or visit the district's website for additional information. I encourage those willing and able to volunteer to get involved in this life-changing opportunity. I have a motion from Mrs. Long and a second from Mrs. Kane to approve the proclamation recognizing April 2025 as National Volunteer Appreciation Month. All in favor? Any oppose? The motion passes, six, zero. Board members, before we go downstairs for photos, I would like to share some comments on those who are being recognized this evening. This year, I had an opportunity to join a great team of individuals in the process of narrowing down the 2025 Outstanding Volunteers. It was a challenging task due to so many people making a positive contribution to our students and schools. Thank you and congratulations to the 2025 Outstanding Volunteers. You are appreciated and congratulations to everyone being recognized tonight.
Are there any additional comments from the board? We will now go down for photos. Mr. Hendrick, would you introduce the next three items?
My pleasure, Madam Chair. As the board goes down for photos for our next item, item four point three, which is recognition of the 2025 Outstanding School Volunteers. We have a number that are here tonight that we'll recognize. We had a very nice breakfast. Want to thank Achieva Credit Union for their longtime partnership and sponsoring that breakfast to honor volunteers from each of the areas of our school district. And once again, I'll call on Dr. Jane Lucas, our Director of Strategic Partnerships, to introduce our honored guests this evening. Dr. Lucas?
Thank you, Mr. Hendrick. The Outstanding School Volunteer Award Program was created to recognize volunteers who have shown outstanding dedication and commitment to quality education in Florida's K-12 public schools. This recognition program serves to highlight and inspire robust school and community relationships, including innovative and sustainable approaches to improving the academic performance and resiliency of students. This year, Pinellas County's Outstanding School Volunteer Selection Committee identified 14 honorees and three category winners from the more than 75 nominations that were submitted from our schools. Congratulations to the following honorees. The award winners from Area One are, in the youth category, from Eisenhower Elementary, Isabella Rosada-Glasford. And, yes. And in the adult category, from Cypress Woods Elementary, Stephen White. Area Two award winners are, in the adult category, from Safety Harbor Middle, Kasai Waller. And senior category, from Plum Elementary, Lynn Cattigan. Area Three award winners are, in the youth category, from Orange Grove Elementary, Brayden Bessler. And in the senior category, from Richard O. Jacobson Technical High, Vernon Bryant. Transformation Zone Award winner, in the adult category, from Fairmount Park Elementary, is Courtney Williams. The overall district winners are as follows. Youth category, Isabella Rosada-Glasford, congratulations. In the adult category, Courtney Williams, congratulations to you. And in the senior category, Vernon Bryant, congratulations. And for the second year in a row, a volunteer from Pinellas County schools has been chosen as a state finalist. Congratulations go to Vernon Bryant from Richard O. Jacobson Technical High, representing Pinellas County schools as a state finalist. Thank you.
As we have a picture with our winners of the year and our volunteers of the year, I want to thank all the families. I know we have some school personnel that are here tonight to support them. Thank you so much, and keep up the great work. Our next recognition is for the Adult and Career Education Florida Teacher of the Year. And I'd like to call up the Executive Director of Adult Career Technical Education, Mr. Mark Hunt, to introduce our Teacher of the Year, who is from Pinellas County Schools. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Hendrick. Madam Vice Chair, Board members, Mr. Hendrick and staff, and all of our guests. Every year, the Adult and Community Educators of Florida names their Adult Education Teacher of the Year. And out of 35,000 full-time adult educators across the state, this year, that recognition comes to one of our very own. I'd like to introduce Mrs. Jett Fowler, who is an adult high school graduate, um, excuse me, adult high school teacher and GED teacher at Clearview Adult, who has a tremendous number of graduates. And one of the things that her graduates say about her is that she expects the best from them and believes in them, and that causes them to believe in themselves. So with that, I'd like to welcome Mrs. Jett Fowler as the Florida Adult Education Teacher of the Year. Also with her tonight are her husband and two of her sons. I'd like to have them stand up. And also her principal and some supporters from Clearview Adult.
Congratulations, Mrs. Fowler. And finally tonight, our last recognition, our recognition of recipients of state and national award winners from our K-12 student body. We will recognize each set of students and have them come up and take pictures with our school board members. And our first set of students will be the winners of the National Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. If those students will come up. The National Scholastic Art and Writing Awards are the nation's longest-running and most prestigious recognition programs for creative teens. If you guys will go right over here and I'll call you up just one at a time, first ones. These students here are among five gold medal award winners of Pinellas County schools. They will receive their gold medals in the National Scholastic Art and Writing Awards Ceremony in Carnegie Hall this June in New York City. Congratulations to Sophie Valentino from Dunedin High School. Aiden Evans from Gibbs High School. And Ethan Pinto from Hollins High School. Congratulations. Our next recipient is a student from Clearwater High School, the captain of the girls' swim team, who is receiving tonight on behalf of the entire swim team, who won the Gold Scholar Team Award from the National Interscholastic Swimming Coaches Association of America. Clearwater High School's girls' swim team was recognized for the highest team grade point average in the nation. The team earned an average GPA of 3.08. Here tonight to represent Clearwater High School is swimmer and captain Alexandra Kinsey. Congratulations. Our next set of honorees are also an athletic team recognized for a state championship in academics, and that is the Eastlake High School Girls Soccer Team, which had the highest grade point average in the Florida High School Athletic Association for Class 6A. The soccer team earned an average GPA of 3.826 across the state. By the way, the team also made the state championship game last year and Final Four this year. Congratulations. And here tonight to represent Eastlake High School are members of the girls' soccer team, Chloe Christopherson, Maya Figener, and Ava Lewis. Congratulations. Our third academic athletic champion team tonight is also from Eastlake High School, the Girls Wrestling Team, which had the highest grade point average in Class 1A in the entire Florida High School Athletic Association. The team earned an average GPA of 3.868. Here tonight, representing Eastlake High School's Girls Wrestling Team, are Emerson Brant, Phoenix Crane, and Leila Miman. All right, congratulations. Our next recognition is a student who won the statewide Black History Month Essay Award Contest. Recognized tonight is Eva Baldwin from Adira Beach Fundamental School, who was one of six students in the state of Florida and one of only two middle school students to receive the award. She will receive a two-year Florida prepaid college scholarship and a $100 gift card for school supplies. Congratulate from Adira Beach Fundamental, Eva Baldwin. Congratulations. Our next set of honorees come from Palm Harbor University High School, and it is the Team Robotic Team, which recently won first place in the state's first tech challenge championship. The team's name is Volteris, and they are headed to the World Championships in Houston, Texas, next week. Tonight, please congratulate students on the Volteris Robotics Team from Palm Harbor University High School, Alejandro Arroyo Sadenio, Carter McKay, Rachel Mesador, and Sophia Swirldoff. Please wish our students best of luck next week and students that is an excused absence for the World Championships. And our final honoree tonight is a student from Seminole High School who won first place in the state of Florida Shades of Purple Art Contest poem. For art contests for her poem, the contest sponsored by the Water Reuse Association raises awareness about the benefits of water recycling. And here tonight is the statewide winner in first place from Seminole High School, Adeline Conway. Congratulations. Congratulations, Adeline. And our board members will join us back up at the dais. And congratulations to all of our students, our volunteers, and all those recognized tonight. You are certainly welcome to stay for our entire board meeting, but now is also a good time to exit if you so choose. We look forward to seeing you in schools very soon.
We will now move on to public comments on agenda items. Mrs. Houck, are there any speakers?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have one speaker for agenda items.
Members of the public have three separate opportunities to address the board when we gather for a business meeting. The first is public comment on agenda items. The second is at public hearings, most of which are policies. The last is after our meeting when speakers may address the general business of the district. At each opportunity for public input, board members are here to listen to you. This is not a time for interaction, but the board will take your comments into consideration before it votes on the agenda items. The board is committed to a standard of civility and decorum in conducting our meetings. This includes refraining from clapping or making audible noises during or after a speaker's comments. We appreciate you assisting us in maintaining a civil and constructive environment. Lastly, please note that this meeting and all public comments will be broadcast live on the internet, and the video will be publicly archived. Members of the public may always communicate with the board through our email address, board@pcsb.org, or by calling the board office at 588-6300. Thank you. Mrs. Houck, please call the first speaker.
Mark Clutho, speaking to item seven point four and seven point five.
Mark Clutho Largo. Seven point five. Again, your strategic priority, fiscal and operational responsibility for another bad building. $2.7 million. And of course, you mentioned the HVAC. Oh, yeah. Pump that carbon. Pump the carbon. The purchasing items in accordance with bid policies and procedures. Well, you know what's gonna happen, don't you? We have the new Trump tariffs. Or should we say taxes? And what's that going to do to those bids and procedures? Are you ready for that? What's that gonna do to your stupid buildings? If you were doing them the right way, building for the long-term future the right way, the right way, not what I see like that. Stupid building up at Clearwater High oriented the wrong way with that west glass. What kind of bid did you get on that one? The future's dim. Your procedures are all wrong. All wrong. More to come.
Madam Chair, there are no other speakers for agenda items.
Thank you. Item six is unfinished business. There is no unfinished business. We will move on to item seven. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? With a motion from Mrs. Long and a second from Mrs. Myers, all in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes 6-0. For Agenda Item eight, we have no items for this agenda, and we will move on to item number nine. Mr. Hendrick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to start tonight by just giving a quick update on legislation and items in Tallahassee. We continue to, of course, monitor that legislation, and in particular, the budget. We've seen, on average, about a 1% increase proposed from the governor, the House, and the Senate, which will mean an overall decline in funding for Pinellas County schools, likely in the tens of millions of dollars due to declining enrollment and increased cost. We'll have an update on revenue projections, staffing allocations, and how we will balance the budget at our workshop next week. Additionally, we're tracking multiple bills, including school safety, charter schools, funding for advanced academics and career technical courses, and much more. I know board members are similarly tracking these events and bills and providing input, advocacy, and feedback where needed. Moving to some academic competitions, we heard a little bit from some speakers earlier about this, but as part of the student experience, we've continued to increase academic competitions across the district, and one recently has expanded district-wide, and that is the Middle School Algebra Bowl Competition. And I want to offer congratulations to the following five schools who will participate in next week's championship: Clearwater Fundamental, Middle School, Safety Harbor Middle School, Thurgood Marshall Middle School, Morgan Fitzgerald, and Meadowlawn Middle Schools. As we quickly approach fast testing next month, we continue to look for ways and methods to engage students in fun and meaningful ways as we continue the school year, and we look forward to that competition next week. Just last week, we celebrated two Pinellas County Schools teachers who were named Emerging Teachers of the Year. Every school in the district has an opportunity to nominate a teacher as Emerging Teacher of the Year, who is someone with less than three years' experience. And just last week, we named the two district-wide winners, Safety Harbor Middle School teacher Emma Johnson and Walsingham Elementary School teacher Gabriella Hernandez. Congratulations to Ms. Johnson and Ms. Hernandez and all the teachers recognized as Emerging Teachers of the Year. Pinellas County students recently won multiple awards at the Future Business Leaders of America statewide competition held in Lakeland last week. More than 500 Pinellas County students competed in the competition, and dozens of students qualified for the national competition in Anaheim, California, in June. Seven teams from six schools, including two middle school teams, won first place in their competitions. Winning teams included Eastlake and Fitzgerald Middle Schools, and Countryside, Osceola, Palm Harbor, and St. Petersburg High Schools. If you were listening carefully, you knew that Countryside was one of those; the students mentioned it a little earlier tonight. Last weekend, we also had state champions at the Florida Federation of Color Guard Circuit State Championships that took place in Daytona Beach. Three first-place winners across the state were the Tarpon Springs High School Varsity and Junior Varsity Teams, and Palm Harbor's Color Guard, which won first place in the regional Class A. We also had top-three performances from Seminole High School, Dunedin Middle School, Seminole Middle School, and Tarpon Springs Middle School. Just a few minutes earlier, you met some of our gold winners in the National Scholastic Art and Writing Awards, but we had 16 students win gold or silver medals, which is an amazingly high number for our creative students in grades 7 through 12. Winning students came from Countryside, Palm Harbor University, Dunedin, Eastlake Gibbs, Holland, St. Petersburg High Schools, and John Hopkins Middle School. Congratulations to all of the gold and silver winners. And board members, as you're well aware, our awards season is in full swing. I want to thank the board members who have been out and about at all of the awards ceremonies: the Yes! I Can! Awards, the Maria Edmonds Hispanic Achievement Awards, last night, the Program to Recognize Initiative in Dedication in Education, or our Pride Awards for 5th and 8th Grade Students. We recognized 450 students at Ruth Eckert Hall last night. And next week, we'll have our Honors Breakfast for our National Merit Finalists and Semi-Finalists and Commended Scholars, so we look forward to celebrating those students next week. A reminder for families, that summer bridge registration is underway. This year, our program in elementary schools has a very strong reading focus, and in middle school and high school is for credit recovery. You can check your status to register and log in on our website. And a reminder for parents who have signed up for summer camp programs, that information can be found at PCSB.org/summercamps, and the deadline to claim a seat is April 15th. Families have received an email and a phone call if they applied for a summer camp, and you can select that in Focus. We've also recently asked families for feedback on transportation needs for next year in our annual ridership survey, and so check your child's Focus page, and you can let us know if you qualify for transportation and if you need that transportation next year. And finally tonight, Madam Chair, I want to recognize one of our employees, who's recognized by a colleague for demonstrating district core values, and tonight's honoree is Mrs. Deborah Boggs, a food and nutrition cook specialist at Ridgecrest Elementary School for the last 28 years. She was recently recognized by a colleague because she always has a friendly greeting and a pleasant smile for her students, connecting with our youngest students in a heartwarming way. Many of our kindergarten and first-grade students look for her line each and every day. Her attendance at school is impeccable, even during a recent health scare. This year, she will be retiring in May after 28 years, and our students and I will miss seeing her each and every day. Thank you, Mrs. Boggs, and all of our employees for the work they do for our students every day. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent Hendrick. Agenda Item 9.2, Items Introduced by the School Board Attorney, Mr. Kaperski.
I have no report this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item 9.3, Items Introduced by the Board. Mrs. Hind has shared a statement that she has asked be read tonight. Mrs. Houck, will you read her statement?
Thank you. Good evening. This may sound odd, but I am both sorry and grateful to not be with you this evening. Sorry because the professional work we do educating children is the very most important work, and grateful because my husband and I have welcomed a brand-new grandson into our family, and it is a great blessing to walk with our daughter through these first few days. I wish everyone this joy. I have three topics I would like to address this evening. First, I would like to congratulate Board Member Caprice Edmund on her recognition as a First Lady of African-American History by the Woodson African-American Museum of Florida, and for her renewed distinction as a certified board member through the Florida School Boards Association. Well deserved. Second, an update on the Health and Human Services Leadership Board. We met this past Friday. Board members Lisa Kane and Katie Blacksburg joined as well. The question that the leadership board had asked itself last spring after receiving presentations on the impact of technology on youth in society was this: Could Pinellas County collaboratively develop and implement something that would improve the health and safety of our county with respect to technology? We received an update on the ongoing work of Pinellas County Schools and the Juvenile Welfare Board regarding the digital responsibility work that is reaching youth in K-12 schools and out-of-school programs. We also learned that JWB is working with a Pediatrics Providers Council on the best message and pathways for that message to reach parents regarding best practice around the topic. The board agreed that there was more work to be done on the topic, and further agreed that a working group would meet this summer to discuss next step, as well as review the bylaws of the Health and Human Services Leadership Board, which were most recently updated in 2015. Lastly, I would like to share two key items from my time in Tallahassee last week. I had the opportunity to meet one-on-one with 10 legislators and attend multiple committee meetings. Two things related to the PCS legislative platform are abundantly clear. Number one, our platform asks for an elevation of career technical education, though House Bill 5101 proposes to reduce the funding of career technical programs by 50%, along with AP, IB, ACE, and dual enrollment classes. There is a Senate Bill 2510 which is similar. I would encourage us all to contact our delegation and any others to oppose these reductions. Number two, our platform also asks for sufficient funding of the escalating costs as required by the state for increasing teacher pay and contributions to the Florida retirement system, both things that we want to do. The less-than-1% funding increase proposed by the House not only will not cover the state-required expense increases, it will not cover healthcare cost increases or other inflationary impacts on our budget. While we might hear "record education funding," please bear in mind that when revenues do not keep up with inflation, that is the same as a reduction in funding. I also encourage all of us, as well as the public, to ask for a minimum of 2% increase to education funding. Even that is lower than the inflation index, and it is lower than in the increased revenue the state has received. We must ask for it and work with the remainder of this year on helping understand why the state systematically funds education below the index and how we can change that in the future. In summary, oppose the 50% cuts to CTE and advanced coursework, and insist on a minimum of 2% increase to base student allocation. Many blessings, and I look forward to being with you at the workshop on Tuesday.
Thank you. Are there any other board reports? Ms. Peters?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank, say, I was at the Pride Awards last night, and it was just, it's always an amazing, it's always an amazing event, shaking the hands of all those little kids, and they're all different ages and sizes. It's just, it's always just wonderful to see the faces that, of the people that our work impacts, so I just, I'm so grateful for that. I want to echo, congratulations to Ms. Edmonds for her award, but I want to recognize Mr. Hendrick, because I know he won't do it, and we are so lucky to have him as our superintendent, but he was, again, recognized as Tampa Bay's, one of Tampa Bay's most 100 influential people by Tampa Bay's Business Journal. So, congratulations to Mr. Hendrick, and congratulations to our district for having him as our superintendent, and I just can never say enough about having him here to guide our district and, and just, I don't know, I can't say enough. So, thank you, Mr. Hendrick, and thank you to all those who contributed to that, and I think that's it. Thanks.
Any more reports? Thank you. So I do have a couple of reports. This week is Assistant Principals Week. Thank you, Assistant Principals, for the skills and support that you provide students, staff, and the families that you serve. You are appreciated. And there were several items that we voted on in the consent agenda, and I'd like to just talk about two of them. Agenda Item 7.3, which is a transfer for the Chief Strategy Impact Officer. Mrs. Dole's position, which will save the district over $200,000. The department who reported to the Chief Strategy and Impact Officer will now report to the superintendent and deputy superintendent. Some constituents have asked for reductions in administrative staff at this building, and this is one example of Superintendent Hendrick and team finding efficient and practical ways to meet the needs of the district and address some budget constraints. Mrs. Dole has provided great leadership in her role as Chief Strategy and Impact Officer. I'm confident her experience and insight will build upon the work established by Mr. Herbig and team once this transition is finalized. For Agenda Item 7.5, the board approved allocating additional funds at the Betty Ray Ivy area for Building 5 to bring that up to code, and this will serve as a STEM and robotics center for students to build, practice, and compete with students from other schools, as well as being a storage facility. Last Wednesday and Thursday, I was in Tallahassee advocating for our local platform and the platform of Greater Florida Consortium as school boards. As the president of the organization, Mrs. Hind attended the legislative days also, as mentioned in her report. I met with several legislators and watched some of the committee meetings. There were several key takeaways. One is the budget proposals will not fully fund public schools. The governor, senate, and house budget differ in various ways. This was spoken about more in depth during our business meeting. The budgets for both the House and the Senate are expected to head to their committees or chambers for a vote this week. Mrs. Hind reports discussed the impact of House Bill 5101. We met with a representative sponsoring this bill, and ultimately, I really hope that the emails, calls, and discussions regarding this bill lead to a repeal. Pinellas County Schools could potentially lose over $19.4 million if this bill passes. This 50% cut would impact AP, IB, ACE, CAPE in early graduation. There are several bills that will negatively impact our district and students if they pass, so to echo Mrs. Hind's sentiments, please contact your legislators. On a positive note, I was able to connect our wonderful Director of Nursing, Mrs. O'Toole, with Senator Guillermo Smith regarding the EpiPen legislation that he's working on, and what he's trying to do as it relates to EpiPens and making sure that students have this life-saving medication is something that we're doing right here already. So we are leading here in Pinellas County Schools. Overall, if we don't show up or advocate for what our students, staff, and schools need, it would appear that all is going well, and there are no complaints. Our next meeting will be held in Tampa at the FSBA FATS Conference for the consortium, and I will begin planning to host the school board members and staff from other districts here in Pinellas County as we begin planning for the '25-'26 legislative session. Consortium staff will also begin contacting member districts regarding her key relief efforts and support. That way, we're a little bit ahead of the game instead of having the impact and trying to scramble to find resources. The next District Monitoring Advisory Committee meeting is April 24 at 6:00 p.m. The meetings are held virtually and are recorded. For additional information, please visit the district's website. Also, the District Safety and Security Committee meets monthly to discuss safety and security. I participated in the meeting last month, and I am very appreciative of the collaboration, leadership, and receptiveness of committee members and partners. Thank you. I have received several Safe Zone Resolution emails, and I'd like to acknowledge that it is the right of every child, regardless of immigration status, to access a free, public K-12 education, and the district supports and welcomes all students. The district also has the responsibility to ensure that all students who reside within its boundaries have access to an education. The district has procedures that they would implement if a school was visited by immigration officials. These procedures were shared with school-based administrators. If you have questions or would like additional information, please contact the district. And lastly, I would like to just take time to honor former school board member Mary Brown, recognizing the life and legacy of her. Her lifelong passion for children and education was evident, from operating a daycare, serving as the Director of Coordinated Childcare, and being elected to Pinellas County School Board in 2002. She was the first African-American person elected to the school board. She will always be remembered for the impact she had, and I am grateful for the work which has paved way for myself and those elected before me. May we please honor her for a moment of silence. Thank you. Agenda Item 9.4, Review of Board Requests. Mrs. Woodford, did you note any board requests?
Madam Chair, I did not note any board requests this evening.
Thank you. I adjourn this meeting, and we will now move to public participation. Meeting adjourned. Mrs. Houck, are there any speakers?
Yes, there are eight speakers this evening.
Please note that the views and comments of public speakers are their own and not endorsed nor sponsored by the school board or district. We cannot ensure the accuracy of statements made, but will review concerns that are raised and take action when appropriate. This may include clarifications or the referral of speakers to the proper staff member for assistance. The board is committed to a standard of civility and decorum in conducting our meetings. This includes refraining from clapping or making audible noises during or after a speaker's comments. We appreciate you assisting us in maintaining a civil and constructive environment. Additionally, Additionally, please note that although board members or Superintendent Hendrick may leave the dais briefly, there are speakers in the back room and we will continue to be able to hear your comments. Thank you.
The first two speakers are Mark Clutho and Lee Bryant.
Mark Clutho, Largo, what I am saying is accurate and has been for 25 years. And you people flagrantly ignore it. It's inexcusable. Yeah, and you, the governor, Governor DeFuer and his Republican cronies. What do they want to do? They want to give us a new gilded age on steroids. Having young teenagers working the mines. Yeah. I don't have the article with me, but there's an extensive article I will be bringing. But here's one from earlier. Here's what immigration cracks down, crackdowns mean for Florida. Yeah. Overnight, the children's will be working. Young 14-year-olds and what it means. They'll be poor learners and they'll be dropouts. Yeah, like I said, a gilded age. Of course, you know, when they want the serfs and the aristocrats, that's how it works. And you know, I hear the refrain again, oh woe is we, not as enough money. Not enough money, but here we are in this room and the air conditioning has not stopped running. Well, you know, when you have a stupid lighting system to start with, you have to keep pumping the AC to remove the heat the lights generate. And when people are wearing coats and ties, you need more AC to remove that body heat. Now, like I say, I've been bringing this for 25 years. And of course, what do we just read in the paper? The manatees are in bad, bad shape. It all adds up. You people are terrible. I mean...
Good evening, Vice Chair Edmond, members of the board, Superintendent Hendrick and staff. My name is Lee Bryant and I'm the President of the Pinellas Classroom Teachers Association. Uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Edmond, it looks like you were reading my notes because I was also going to recognize Mary Brown and her contributions as the first African-American elected to the school board here in Pinellas County. Uh, congratulations, Mr. Hendrick, on your award. Uh, but that brings me back to this. I wonder what the heroes that inspired me as a young man would think about what's going on in the United States today. Heroes like Ruby Bridges, who just founded the Ruby Bridges Foundation just 25 years ago, just 25 years ago, uh, to promote the values of tolerance, respect, and appreciation for all differences. Describing the mission of the group, she said racism is a grown-up disease and we must stop using our children to spread it. While I applaud the January statement from Superintendent Hendrick and staff regarding the policies of agents possibly coming on campuses of Pinellas County Schools, I do not believe it goes far enough. The school's, Safe Zone Schools Resolution would declare formally and emphatically. It continues to be the policy of the district not to allow any individual or, or organization to enter a school site if the educational setting would be disrupted by that visit. Given the likelihood of substantial disruption posed by the presence of ICE or state or local law enforcement agencies acting for ICE and requests from ICE or other agencies to visit a school site should be presented to the superintendent's office for review as to whether access to the site is permitted by the law, a judicial warrant is required, or any other legal considerations apply. This review should be made expeditiously, but before any immigration, law enforcement agent, or officer appears at a school site. And it continues, be further resolved, the district shall post this resolution at every school site and distribute it to district staff, students, and parents using the usual means of communication and that the resolution be translated into all the languages spoken at home. That, I believe, is very important. It's easy for us to speak it here where there are going to be very few people who pay attention. Let's be honest, your ratings aren't great. Uh, but putting it into the language of the people that are at home would reassure them that we are on their side and we believe in the safety of all of our students, all of our students and their families. I once again ask the school board to formally adopt the Safe School Zones Resolution. Thank you for your time. Alone, we can do so little. Together, we can do so much.
The next two speakers are Nicole St. Ledger and Allison Ford.
Good evening. There was a general feeling of hope when this district administration started that it would be supportive not only of students and their families, but importantly, supportive of the teachers in this district. Teachers, parents, and students have stood here asking you to listen to why they want to keep an eight-class schedule. In response to the outpouring of support, you went back to the schools and gave them the choice of teaching six of seven or seven of eight with no pay change. You made the schools and teachers vote. Vote on if the classes were reduced or if they would work without an increase in compensation for the extra class. You set the teachers up. You set it up to be able to say the teachers chose this, making them the scapegoats for the dis- for the district's decision. This action is the opposite of supporting teachers in this district. I am here to say as a parent, we will not let the responsibility of the scheduled decision be placed on the teachers. They were given two bad choices. Take away a class and impact the education students receive, or add more responsibilities to their already full schedules. I know students that will not be able to complete their lines of study next year as seniors because of the loss of this class. And the statement made that these teachers are not working as much as other teachers is laughable as they are filling their open periods, after-school times, and vacations with rehearsals, practices, and competitions. Neither the teachers nor the students are winning here. The district decided to make this change without asking for any input from schools, teachers, or families. In many cases, students had already been asked to start course selection for the next year before the announcement of the schedule change was made. Now, please note, if my last statement is incorrect, that you did ask for input, I then ask, please release the public records regarding this topic that were requested almost two months ago because transparency from this district has been non-existent. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for the honor of speaking. And tonight, I am not just speaking for me, but for several other parents who have all had bullying and special needs concerns that they do not feel are being addressed at Oakhurst Elementary School. While I am only going to list the concerns tonight that have occurred to me personally, please understand that many of these have occurred to other parents and they have asked me to share more of my story in terms of what's going on. I have a seven-year-old autistic son that's attending Oakhurst Elementary School and like the majority of special needs, he has an individual education plan, an IEP. Upon starting at Oakhurst Elementary School, uh, the school, including Principal Kennedy, refused to allow my autistic son to receive special needs services and instead placing him in a general education classroom without access to services for two months despite numerous protests, including an email from the Florida Department of Education advising them that it is illegal against federal and state law. To my knowledge and numerous requests, nothing was investigated so that this wouldn't happen again to other students. After that, Oakhurst was legally required to provide my son with compensatory services to make up for those two months. After three months of asking Ms. Brianna Tassar, instead of working with me to have any kind of plan, she ordered Oakhurst Elementary School to implement a plan that I had rejected and had not even been able to show my son's father yet. I have asked her to work with me to make some kind of plan. She has refused and I have also asked this to be looked at by Superintendent Heinz and Superintendent Hendrick, but neither one will look into it. To this day, that plan is still being implemented without our consent. I've also reported that my son has been physically bullied to the point he's hurt, called rude names, made fun of his disabilities, told to, excuse me, an F-word is included, but told to F off, given the middle finger and relentlessly teased to the point he's in tears and doesn't want to go to school. Principal Kennedy said that despite witnesses and several other kids in his class getting teased in the same way by the same bully, she will unfound all of the bullying reports because she said this is only teasing and teasing is not bullying, which is against the Florida Department of Education's definition of bullying. I reported this to Superintendent Heinz, Superintendent Hendrick to look into, as I believe that it is the school's responsibility to look into bullying complaints fairly and not unfound them based on a false definition. This has not happened. I've reported that Assistant Principal Smith questioned my son in front of the bullies. Nothing has happened. I've been yelled at. Nothing's happened. I've reported that my son has been denied a safety plan. Nothing happened. And I hope to work with you and wish it could go on. Thank you.
The next two speakers are Trish Lee and Tracy McConnell.
Mrs. Houck, would you please call the next two so they're ready? Thank you.
They will be followed by Andrea Dort and Markell Rangel.
Good evening, members, oh, good evening, members of the board. My name is Trish Lee and I am a Cambridge program student at Hollins High School. My primary, primary objective here today is to explain to you why we need to keep the eight-class block schedule. The official PCS Q&amp;A portion on the PCS website discussing the block schedule explains that it will help students retain material and connect more with their teachers. This is false. A 45-minute class period does not adequately ensure enough one-on-one interactions. For example, the average instruction time is anywhere from 30 to 15 minutes. Some teachers may even use the entire 90-minute class period. I am speaking from personal experience and I have seen, and what I have seen is that the extra allotted class time without the pressure of a time crunch of a 45-minute class period has shown three things. One, more questions to be asked by students for further clarification on topics. Two, more group work with classmates. And three, more discussion time. A study done by Harvard Associate Professor Eric Taylor across 2,000 classrooms shows that more class time allowed for students to score .08 of a standard deviation higher on their English assessments, which accounts for only one-third of a standard deviation of total teacher contributions to their test scores. Now, I've just said a lot of mathematical terms that may not make any sense to you, but to put it into perspective, that is the difference between a student, a population of students passing a class and not passing. Now, I would like to address Hollins specifically because we have three rigorous programs that are in desperate need of the four-by-four block schedule. Cambridge, the Academy, Academy of Entertainment Arts and Culinary. These programs desperately need the full hour-and-a-half class time because there are many projects, lessons, and opportunities that cannot, that cannot be done in simply 45 minutes alone. Con- contrary to what the general public may think, you cannot decorate a cake anywhere in under an hour. You cannot create a film in 45 minutes. Our programs are successful where AEA students win awards for their films, culinary students receive real useful certifications, and Cambridge students obtain merit scholarships for their dream schools. Although there is discussion of turning those programs, program classes such as culinary into two-class periods so that they still have the 90 minutes, that takes away the, um, the opportunity for electives. This includes computer science classes, art classes, ASL, foreign language classes, and many other electives. All of this to say that the instruct, extra instructional time matters, although yes, 45 minutes for 80 days is the same as 90 minutes for 90 days from all of these classes. However, that 45-minute gap can be life-changing and I would not be standing before you today if it weren't. Thank you for your time.
Hello. My name is Tracy McConnell. I'm a third-grade teacher at Pinellas Central Elementary. It was just nine short months ago that I came here to one of the first evening school board meetings of the year. At that meeting, I celebrated with all of you how Pinellas Central was an A and we got that A because me and the other teachers at my school worked hard with our students to get there. At Pinellas Central, we believe in love first. When you build a relationship with a student, it really opens the world to them. Students cannot learn until their basic needs are met. This means they must be fed, loved, and feel safe before learning. Now, I'm going to point out something that we all know and live every day. The world is a scary place, even if you are an adult. Imagine what it's like to be a kid in this political climate. Kids don't really understand what's going on. They just gets bits and pieces of what they hear on TV or overhear whispered conversations from their parents that are not meant for a kid's ear. Then they must try and come to school and function. I was a third-grade teacher during the 2016 election. I had many ESOL students in my class. I remember a little boy who was a very sweet boy who always worked hard at school. He was just over his two years in a Florida school, so he needed to pass the state assessments to go to fourth grade. I noticed as time passed and the election got closer, the little boy was acting differently. One day, he came in and he wasn't working. Instead, his face was red and he had been crying. I pulled him to side, pulled him aside to see what was wrong and what he told me was heartbreaking. He wasn't sleeping because he was afraid that if Trump won the election, that his parents would get taken from him. I hugged him and reassured him as best I could that he didn't need to worry about any of that. All he needed to know was that his parents and the people at school would do what was needed to be done to keep him safe. The point is, kids need our reassurance and leadership now more than ever. If Pinellas plans to maintain our A, we need to make sure that we send the clear message that our schools are safe for all kids. I encourage you all to sign the Safe School Resolution and wear the safety pin with me to show all teachers and students that you support safe schools. I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to give you guys this bag and there's lots of different colors in there and you can choose the color that you would like. Thank you so much.
Andrea Dort. And Markell Rangel.
Good evening, board and people of the audience. I want to let you know that I agree with everything that the chair, Mrs. Heinz, said in the remarks today, especially in regards to state legislation. But I would suggest to the public and to everybody else to ask the legislation to not do an increase of 2%. Let's do 4%. That would cover our cost of living, hopefully, a little bit better than just the measly 1% they were offering. So, the other thing I wanted to do is say I agree with the superintendent's comments on the legislation. Thank you very much. Public needs to keep our legislation held to our constitution to fund public education, not reduce funds. I also want to congratulate Mrs. Edmonds and her awards and recognition- I also want to congratulate Mrs. Edmonds and her awards and recognitions. I am very proud to have served as Mrs. Edmonds' teacher, and I've also served with her as a teacher and a union member. So, she just... The district is blessed to have Mrs. Edmonds. Thank you very much for that. I was saddened to hear about the loss of Mrs. Brown, and I also want to support the union in the Safe Zone in regards to our resolution, because I do believe in safety in the classroom. Which brings me, lastly, to something that's personal. I am a 30-year veteran. I've been teaching in the district since 1994. I have several degrees, and I started out as a drama teacher, and I was recruited to be a reading teacher, because, you know, drama in the classroom, readers theater, projects and all the skills I have to have, projects towards being a reading teacher. So, I've been teaching most of my career as a reading teacher, and I've been very successful, especially this year, with my juniors meeting their graduation requirement. It's been a challenge this year to have me setback, and I was asked to teach the ninth and 10th graders in foundational classes. And I heard from the previous teachers who've been doing this for the last three years that it's very difficult to do this job when you combine ninth and 10th graders. And one of our teachers on our campus is not working with us right now because she's home taking care of her husband, but even the substitute has complained and acknowledged that it is very difficult to the maturity level of our students to be in a ninth and 10th grade combined foundational class.
Good evening. My name is Markell Rangel, and I am a first-grade teacher at Azalea Elementary. Before I begin, I just want to say I apologize if my voice shakes. Public speaking is not exactly my thing unless it's in front of a room of six-year-olds. But I believe so strongly in what I have to say tonight that I'm stepping out of my comfort zone, because I know I'm speaking not just for myself, but for so many teachers who feel the same way. I'd like to speak about what's really at stake with the decision to cut instructional and support staff. Not numbers, not budgets, people, students, the lives of children who walk through our doors every morning needing more than we already have the capacity to give. At Azalea, we're losing 11 educators and staff, 11 relationships, 11 trusted adults who help students feel safe, seen, and successful. These aren't people you can simply replace with a staffing formula. These are people who understand our students, many of whom who've come to school carrying the weight of circumstances beyond their years. I'm projected to start next year with 21 to 22 students, and I know more will come. I've gained four students mid-year this year alone. It's disheartening to walk into a new school year already burnt out, knowing I'll be expected to meet the unique academic, behavioral, and emotional needs of two dozen young children on my own. This is particularly frustrating, as I pride myself on my ability to meet my students where they're at, and I can confidently say the same about my phenomenal team. This 20-to-1 ratio being pushed forward by this district is just unsustainable. It's inhumane, and I don't say that lightly. It's impossible to give students the individual attention they need when you're stretched so thin, impossible to differentiate effectively, impossible to know every student the way they deserve to be known. You've been in schools, you've been in classrooms, but unless you've stood in front of 26 and 7-year-olds with no other adult in the room on a testing day, during a meltdown, while you're trying to reteach a concept to a small group, you don't fully understand what we're being asked to do. This is not the profession I entered. We've lost naptime, play, and space for social-emotional development in kindergarten. Currently, my class is rushing into abstract math concepts in first grade just because it's on the upcoming STAR assessment, not because it's developmentally appropriate. Our kids need more support, not less. They need nurturing, they need consistency, and they need the adults in this room to prioritize what's right over what's easy. I urge you to fight, to fight for the teachers who show up every day and pour everything they have into students, because we are running on empty, and this district and system keeps asking us for more. Thank you.
Madam Chair, there are no more speakers.
Thank you.